Terrace, would you like to lead us in a prayer before we start the meeting?
Counsel. Our Father who art in heaven, holy is your name. Your kingdom come. Your will be done in earth as it is in heaven. Your will be done in this nation, in Phelps County, Rolla, these chambers and in each of our lives as it is in heaven. As leaders in our community serving this great people, we recognize that we are accountable to you, a holy righteous God, for how we legislate and administrate. Lord, we pray that your wisdom, understanding and knowledge guide our thoughts, words and action tonight. As Rolla, which is on a hill, can be seen for miles at night in all directions, so let our city display to our country, state and nation, a united people governed and living your kingdom on earth as it is in heaven. These things we pray and decree in the powerful, mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Terrace.
Would you open the meeting with a pledge? Megan, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item tonight is the consent agenda. Counsel to consider approval of the minutes from the City Council meetings on February 5th and the 20th, and both of those particular meetings had executive sessions afterwards. Are there any questions on the minutes? If there's no questions, is there a motion to approve?
Josh will make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We do not have any public hearings tonight. Mayor and counsel reports of boards and commissions, we have eight listed. Are there any questions on any of those? If not, moving to old business. The first item is an ordinance approving the application of a PUD, 127 Howard Johnson Drive.
Okay. Just to be real quick, this is the second reading, so this is the old Howard Johnson's property on HJ Drive, so this is just north of that Motomart, kind of near the Highway 72 and I-44 area. Basically, this is a former hotel site and it's been unused for about a decade. And so the applicant is seeking to basically convert this building into apartment complex and the request is to use the existing footprint for apartment complex and convert the building, convert the rooms and some space that was already inside the building for these rooms. That density of apartments is higher than the C2 district would allow and so that's the request is for the PUD to basically approve this. So as I said, this is the old Howard Johnson's site. This is a site plan showing the properties, they're going to, it's the existing building footprint and the parking is going to be added and it'll be slightly over one parking space per unit. And so they're going to get 91 units out of this. This building had 80 rooms when it was formerly a motel and there'll be about 2,600 square feet of commercial space. Plan zoning commission did recommend approval with a condition had to do with doing something because some of the parking crosses the property line, so some cross access easements or something, moving the property line or something like that to take care of that since they own both properties. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom?
Tom, hey, kind of random one that just jumped in my mind. I was assuming because they're proposing for 91 units, is that that was as much as our PUD would allow? If they changed their mind and wanted to put 10 more by doing additional whatever, I'm just hypothetically, would they be allowed to without coming back? Are we approving only up to 91 units to be developed?
You're going up to 90, approving up to 91.
Okay.
It could go a little bit less, I guess, if something happened, but we aren't going to let them go more than 91.
Okay. Just want to clarify. Thank you.
Tom, and I know 91 is the number we've been hearing for one bedroom, but I thought, aren't there just a handful of?
Yes.
Yeah, I think five, something like that, four or five.
Is that included in the 91 or is that 91 plus the five?
It's 91 units.
Okay, total.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions for Tom? If not, can we have the final reading?
An ordinance to approve the rezoning of 127 HJ Drive to apply a PUD planned unit development overlay to the property zone C2, general community.
It's counsel's pleasure. Nathan will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Steen?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Broman?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yay.
Bradley?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Eleven Eyes.
Second item is an ordinance to approve the purchase of a tract of land on Olive Street.
Yeah, we were approached just a couple of months ago from a new owner of the property. It consists of a total of .7 acres near the intersection of Olive Street and Highway 72. They reached out to the city, inquired into our interest in that property. It's immediately adjacent to the Green Acres Park and the playground and we thought we might have some wiggle room in negotiations, but they were pretty set on a $30,000 value for that .5 acres. And counsel did a first reading of that. We think this makes a lot of sense. It's going to be an opportunity for us to expand some parking and relieve some congested parking, particularly on Olive Street when they overlap ball field games. So what we have in your packet tonight is the final reading of the contract and secondarily, if counsel so desires, what we're proposing is that we take that $32,000, $30,000 plus about $1,800 for a survey and a subdivision because we're going to have to take that .7 acre and carve out the .5 acre that the city's going to be getting and so maximum about $32,000. And then we'd ask counsel to make a motion to approve use of the parkland reserve funds, which has about $75,000 in it. We actually have accumulated those funds from other residential subdivisions throughout the community for the very purpose of buying parkland or improving those parklands. So we think this is a really good use for that. Counsel doesn't have to do that, does require two-thirds vote, otherwise presumably we'd take this from the park fund as opposed to the parkland reserve fund. So happy to answer any questions about either of those actions.
Any questions for John?
So, you go ahead.
So, John, what's the balance in the park fund or how will that affect the budget or the funding in the park?
Park fund or the park reserve, parkland reserve fund?
The park fund, which is, I guess, the first step and if we don't, we go to the parkland reserve?
Well, we're proposing, the first one would be a contract to purchase it and then we can decide where we're going to take it from.
Parkland reserve, you said we had 75 in that, correct?
Yeah.
The other fund, what do we have in that or how does it affect?
Park funds probably got $300,000 or so. That's a balance we try to keep in the park fund to maintain park system improvements and so we certainly could use that fund. But what we're trying to do, and counsel kind of ratified this a few years ago on the parkland reserve fund, we've been accumulating those monies but never spending them. And so the goal was within a, in fact, we changed the ordinance to say within a reasonable time after receipt, the city will put those dollars back into the community. Because think of it, when we were getting those values, when land is subdivided residentially, people are paying a little bit of that impact fee and this puts it back into a improvement that the community can benefit from.
There was a little more to that, too. First of all, I think the park fund, driven by the sales tax primarily, is really to operate and maintain the current park system. There are some monies there for capital improvements and that's when we go to the voters with a typical list. So this isn't on the list, doesn't mean we can't do it, but it's not on that list. Back to the parkland reserve fund, there was a committee that was formed a few years ago to look at it. One of the things that came out is, is the money was desired to go to the various parts of the community. So the idea was this area develops, a developer has to give land or money, one over here, one over here, one over here. The committee at the time didn't want these monies all to go to Burwan or all to go to Green Acres, but it was to distribute it somehow as best we can into the local, the areas of the city, whether that's expanding a pocket park, we still call them pocket parks, or something like this. So that's the, that's the theory behind the parkland reserve fund.
And it's been around how long?
Ballpark created that 30 or 40 years ago. It's been around for a long time. City primarily took land up until about 20 years ago and that's why we've got some nice pieces of property along the creeks, but we've got a lot of pretty undevelopable property and so the last 20 years we've been taking more money in lieu of the land.
We, we, we got the creeks, creek beds for a very good reason because it would eliminate the ability for somebody to build right up to that flood plain and then we have to hear it when our basement floods.
Yeah.
Or we could use that particular area for the very popular walking trails. So it was really a win-win. But over the years, as John said, developers would develop an area and give us basically what amounts to a remnant. So if you look at our parkland today, 30 some parks or whatever we have, some of them, quite frankly, are remnant pieces of property. So we've shied away from using the land donation and using the money then to accumulate the money to put in pocket parks and things like that around the community.
Can you recall a recent use of the parkland reserve fund money? When's the last time we purchased something with that or we spent it?
Floyd, I think it was a playground that we did and I can't remember if we used a portion of the parkland reserve fund to match funds at Bueller or if it was the Green Acre All-Inclusive Playground.
We used it at Bueller as a portion of the funding and the plan was also in a couple of the smaller playgrounds that needed renovation to do so again, like this budget year as well. We've also used it when we've had extreme catastrophic windstorms, i.e. the Morgan Lighting as an example and before that, Kemmel, when Kemmel had a windstorm and knocked down the poles, we used some of the parkland money for that as well.
The park is north of the 72 extension. We put some basketball courts in there, you know, it used to be a big.
Ridgeview.
Was that done with this fund?
No, no. Actually, the Ridgeview and the Murray Parks were two that were done differently. Ridgeview came about through TDD money when we redid the 72 extension and Murray was primarily done in a renovation with Park Boy Scouts. They raised the money for the bulk of those improvements for that park.
So Floyd, if we did this, would we still, or John, either one, would we still feel comfortable, we got enough, we'd still have 43,000, 42,000? If one of those emergencies came up again, you think we'd still?
Yes, that's correct. And if we have no further, which we will probably at some point, we don't, not every project ends up getting affected by either the parkland reserve. It depends on whether it's a residential lot split and a subdivision and we, the theory of that has always been, in the different iterations of that ordinance have always been the impact by new residents on the city's park services system. So that's basically the genesis of how this came about 40, 40 years ago. And as, as John and the mayor said, the bulk of that over years has been land, but as we saw more and more that, we have 31 parks and 228 acres. I mean, there's, there's really not, at this point, not a really burning need for more, but when it makes sense, whether it's an addition onto an existing park or extending our trail system or in this case where we've got a situation where we can double our parking in an area where there's significant need, anybody that has children that's played games there knows that's a, parking is a real issue. So we've been very precise in how we go about selecting what projects we're going to do. But in the last ordinance and the, that was passed by city council that was gone through by a group of citizens, members of the parks advisory, as well as counsel had input in the formative stages and when we redid that, we put a stipulation on there that, as John said, the money would need to be used within essentially a big five years. And that because otherwise it was just sitting there and sitting there and we weren't, and it wasn't, it wasn't helping what it was actually enacted to do.
Wasn't the benefit it was meant to be.
Exactly.
So, Mayor, on the first, on the first question, it's about purchase and I'd like to speak to that, that I'm in favor of that. I think that we should do this. I think it's a no-brainer. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion on that portion.
We'll have the final reading first.
Okay, all right. I'm jumping ahead.
Any other questions before we have the final reading? It's going to be a two-step process, so you get two bites of the apple. Final readings?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a vacant land sale contract between the city of Rolla, Missouri and Christopher Zimmerman regarding the purchase of a tract of land on Olive Street near Green Acres Park.
Okay, now I'd like to make an, Josh will say. I'd like to make an offer.
You gonna buy it?
Maybe. No, I'd like to make a motion for the purchase of this property.
I will second that.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Turbin?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Broman?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yay.
Bradley?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Eleven Eyes.
All right, now can we make a motion to purchase this through the parkland reserve fund?
Yeah.
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? This requires eight yes votes. Let's do a roll call. I know we don't have to, but.
Reven?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yay.
Paul?
Yes.
Broman?
Yes.
Eleven Eyes.
Moving on to new business, the first item is an ordinance to approve the implementation of the 1/16th cent park sales tax, otherwise known as Prop P.
Yeah, the voters approved the Prop P 1/16th renewal last April with a 72% approval and you might remember originally that was authorized in April of 2015 with a provision that a portion of that quarter cent sales tax would expire in eight years and then subject to counsel approval and voter approval would be extended. And we agreed last April to go to the voters and have that extended to, for an additional 10 years. Staff failed to bring an ordinance back to codify that and to officially notify the Department of Revenue last summer. Really just came about, about three, four weeks ago when a local business, actually the Lions Club, asked and said, "What's the existing sales tax rate?" And I've been saying, "Well, it's always 7.6%" and I was surprised to find out it was listed as 7.5375%. So this ordinance will, and if we have first reading tonight, final reading in two weeks, we would send that notice up before the end of March, which would put this sales tax in effect on July 1. And I included in the packet the statutory reference that includes that language about the imposition and the action needed to be taken in order to authorize that. Talked with Nathan and the easy answer going forward when we do these is we'll put in the original language of an ordinance calling for an election, an effective date subject to voter approval, so that it'll be a one-step process to provide notice to Department of Revenue rather than a two-step process of doing that currently. So we're proposing a first reading of this ordinance.
Any questions for John? First reading, please.
An ordinance repealing Section 37-23 of the Rolla City Code and enacting a new Section 37-23 in lieu thereof, imposing a 1/16th of 1% sales tax through September 30, 2033 for local parks to improve and manage parks, trails, playgrounds, parking lots, bathrooms, cemetery and natural lands for recreational purposes.
Next item on the new business is an ordinance to repeal Chapter 28 with a new Chapter 28 relating to nuisances.
Okay, so I think we've talked about this over the last few weeks. Staff and legal counsel has gotten together and I think we're bringing together a really good rewrite of Chapter 28. And so I'll go through a little bit of the history. Back in October, we did an update to Chapter 42, the zoning code. During that time, we did a cleanup of Chapter 28 amongst other sections of the ordinance. What this was meant to do was combine the property maintenance from Chapter 20 into Chapter 28 and to remove some of the redundancy between the International Property Maintenance Code and some of the things that were already in Chapter 28. So some of the, the issues that we found with that were, with the International Property Maintenance Code, it does a really good job of addressing buildings and structures themselves, but the, the area of the property maintenance code that addresses exterior property areas or yards are pretty vague. As you can see here, it says exterior property and premises shall be maintained in a clean, safe and sanitary condition. And that's basically the extent of what it says about your exterior yard, which, which leaves a lot to interpretation. There's only two definitions in the property maintenance code and those are garbage and rubbish. And I will read those real quick. Garbage is the animal or vegetable waste resulting from the handling, preparation, cooking and consumption of food. So that's pretty specific. And then rubbish, combustible or non-combustible waste materials except garbage. The terms shall include the residue from the burning of wood, coal, coke and other combustible materials, paper, rags, cartons, boxes, wood, Excelsior rubber, leather, tree branches, yard trimmings, tin cans, metals, mineral matter, glass, crockery and dust and other similar materials. So it didn't really allow for what we consider open storage issues, you know, where you see the, the stoves in the yard or just, you know, boxes. So it addresses trash, but not just regular storage that you see. So some of the things that we decided, so, so we decided to add the open storage and a few other like animal carcasses and then we, we sent it to Nathan and, and we agreed that maybe we needed to really bulk that up. And so really what it does is it's going to allow for clear enforcement. Skyler does a really great job in enforcing our zoning ordinances. This is just going to help his job become a little bit easier. We also removed a section which placed, it was interesting, it placed the enforcement authority on the city council, which, you know, if you, if you get a speeding ticket and you want to appeal that, you wouldn't come appeal it to the city council, you would go to appeals court, which would be the similar situation that we were going to change this Chapter 28 to do. And then we also changed the administrative fees for abatement. We don't want to be the cheapest place to get your yard mowed or your trash picked up. We, we want to make that a little bit harder for people to deal. So then I just have some pictures of some, of some examples, just, just to show you some of the things that we might see. Now, these aren't from the city of Rolla, I found these on the internet.
Thanks for clarifying that.
This is just for a fact. And the next steps, first reading of the ordinance tonight and then second reading on the next city council meeting on 3/18 and then, and we'll, we'll be full force ahead in, in, in front of the spring rush. So do you have any questions?
Any questions for Dawn regarding the content of the proposed ordinance?
I do. I had a constituent reach out to me. The only thing that this person did not see, which was a big thing in their area in Ward 1, was that this, I guess one of the people in that area had about 60 tires stacked up in one of her alleyways, which is a two-pronged issue, but I understand that underneath junk it does say old rubber, but it doesn't necessarily say anything about tires and she was just inquiring about if that was something we could add in or...
I, I suppose we could add it specifically, but I think, I think the, the rubber meets that. I think in that instance, it's in an alleyway, so it's a public alleyway, which is, is hard for enforcement since it's not private property.
It's hard?
Well, it's hard for, for our department to enforce that because it is public property, so the...
Wouldn't it be litter?
It would be litter. The tough part is proving who littered and then in the cleanup technically becomes our responsibility as the city since it is on public property.
But in a sense, but in terms of solving the problem, we could just drive up and remove it. I mean, there's a cost to that.
Correct.
Nothing is free, but...
Yes, correct.
But at least the neighbor wouldn't have to have that ice cream.
Right. But if it was on private property, I believe that the rubber would meet that as far as tires go.
Okay.
Josh, just as a curiosity, do you know if the neighbor has a ring?
Has a...
Camera, a ring camera?
Uh, I don't believe so. I don't know.
Okay. Any other questions for Dawn?
I do, why don't, for Dawn or John or Nathan, what is, so there's red text and there's black text.
Yeah, so I did that just to make it a little easier to show you what we're changing. So the red is all the changes and updates to the ordinance.
But the black exists currently?
Exists.
Or is it something we accidentally deleted?
No, the black exists currently.
Okay.
And then the strike-throughs are what we're kind of cleaning up and getting rid of some.
Perfect, thank you.
Dawn, I have two questions. Or one thing is, I'm looking at Section 3 nuisance and particular E.
I'm sorry, listen, what section?
3E.
Sorry.
Pertaining to putting tree limbs and yard waste out and it says that it has to be out there a day of collection. I would like for us to consider putting like within 24 hours of the collection as opposed to trying to, especially in the fall when you're trying to get all those leaves out there. Nobody wants to, you want to try to get out there a day in advance.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we could do 24 hours. I, I think the intent is that we just don't want it out there all week.
Absolutely, that's, yeah. And then, no, I'll just, I won't bring up that one right now. I'll just, I just, no, the diseased animal running at large was a little...
(laughing).
Y'all, you know this, I just, yeah, that was just a little, how is that a, is a nuisance? How's that fit in?
So nuisances is a very broad concept. It can include stuff that's up in your yard, but it can include things like smoke that's coming off or noises. And actually, one of the ones that comes out of the statutes as an example, and is a very old nuisance, is diseased animals running at large. And that would be, you know, rabid dogs and I guess pigs with trichinosis.
What about feral cats?
Well, they wouldn't be diseased.
Unless...
Well, they might be.
They could be.
Unless they were.
Unless they are, then we would, they would be a nuisance. So there's lots of things and I like classifying things as nuisances in addition to whatever kind of penalty, you know, criminal penalty for doing something, because if you make a nuisance, it gives us a civil remedy against people as well. And it gives us a lot more leverage.
Got you.
There are some other things in here that are, that are a little dated, you know, like cesspools and I think there's something about putting stuff in wells, you know, but hey, you never know.
Just cover it all.
I just want to say, I think that this is really great and it looks like you guys took a lot of time and hard work to getting it ready, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
If, if there's just typographical errors, should those be sent by email or should I, I mean, it seems like a waste of time to go into it right now.
Yeah, you can just send me an email, that'd be fine, yeah.
Just a couple...
Is it the COD one?
Yeah, COD, man, from time to time, it seems like, I don't know, I've seen it three times before. All right, we have poetry today.
There's no further questions? Can I have the first reading?
An ordinance repealing Chapter 28 of the general ordinances of the city of Rolla, Missouri, known as the code of the city of Rolla, Missouri, and enacting a new Chapter 28 in lieu thereof relating to nuisances and property maintenance.
Will we, will we need to make an amendment to it to add listers?
We'll make those before the next.
Okay.
So you'll have an amended version to vote on.
Okay.
Next on the 18th.
Moving on to claims and/or fiscal transactions, we have three. The first one is a motion to... The first one is a motion to award the bid to J&amp;S Small Engine Repair for mowers.
So, we opened bids for a zero-turn mower at the airport. We got four bids. A little bid was from J&amp;S Small Engine Repair of Rolla for a Hustler zero-turn mower. So, staff is recommending awarding the bid to the low bidder for $10,750.
I do have a question. What is this, on the property itself out there at the airport, what is the zero-turn mower specifically used for? Is it for around the buildings, or is it out there in the pasture along the runway?
Both.
Both? My question is, is do we have a tractor that we can possibly put an extended bat wing on instead of using zero-turn mowers for all of that property?
So, we do. We don't have a bat wing. I think it's a twelve-foot bush hog, but around the lights, what we have to use is zero-turn mowers. We don't, you know, tear up the lights.
Okay.
When we set, when I say along the runways, that, that's what we're doing is.
You're not using these for the whole property.
No. I mean, there's, there's a large piece of property up toward Twenty-Eight Highway, toward the entrance, you know, we like to keep nice and mow nice, but the bulk of it is done with the bush hog.
Perfect, thank you.
Darren, if I recall, a part of the, like, retirement process of old equipment was just like when you buy a new one for, like, the more of the in-town parks, when some of the old equipment would actually go out to, like, things like the airport. And so, I was wondering if, did the one out there break down that we're buying a new one? Because I thought that the older equipment that was used in town till we got it moved there when it was being retired.
So, that wasn't favoring us very well. We were spending a lot of money maintaining old equipment, so we've surplused a lot of that old equipment.
Okay.
And our last three years have ever, has replaced a mower every year, so now we'll have three, you know, good mowers out there instead of a whole bunch of old junk ones.
So, that process, you guys aren't doing so much.
Not so much anymore now.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, if the other department's getting rid of it, there was a reason, so.
Sure. Just give it to Darren.
Any other questions for Darren? If not, is there a motion to award the bid to J&amp;S Small Engines?
Nathan will make a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is a motion to award the bid to Pierce Asphalt.
So, we opened bids for a project to overlay Pine Street, and there is a typo in, in your, right up here, it says Sixth Street to Bishop, that should be Twelfth to Bishop. That, so this phase will overlay that section, that's the section that will be reconstructed this summer. We've been talking about the lighting on that project for a while now. There'll be a bid coming forward here in the next couple of months to do the reconstruction part, but we're trying to get the asphalt bid nailed down for this one. So, we do recommend awarding to low bidder Pierce Asphalt LLC for $177,000, $177.90.
Are we doing the curb and gutter?
We.
We, the city, doing the curb and gutter?
So, we hire a contractor to do it, BS.
Any questions for Darren?
I think it's what you just said, but I just want to clarify, this doesn't include the bid to do the curb and gutter.
No.
This is to do the overlay after that.
Correct.
There was no map, I don't believe.
No, I didn't.
But I just want to clarify, it runs, I mean, this is literally running the entire length of Pine Street, isn't it?
So, that's why I said there was a typo. It should have said Twelfth Street to Bishop, not Sixth, so.
That's what you said, okay. I, I thought I missed these.
Which is the limits of where we're doing the new curb and gutter and sidewalks and stuff.
Twelfth to Sixth?
Twelfth to Bishop.
To Bishop, got you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Darren? If not, is there a motion to award the bid to Pierce Asphalt?
Josh will make a motion.
I'll second.
Wait, 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 we have an ordinance on this one?
We do a first, we award first and then do a first reading.
Yeah, that's right, two-step. I'm sorry. I made a motion to award. Okay, is there a second?
Josh made the motion, Terry's second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the city of Rolla, Missouri, Pierce Asphalt LLC.
Third item under fiscal transaction is a motion to award a bid to Pierce Asphalt for a different project.
So, we opened bids for Phase Two asphalt improvements. In your packet is a map depicting what, what streets will be overlaid with this project. A little bidder, again, was Pierce Asphalt LLC. So, staff is requesting a motion for a bid award, first ring of an ordinance, dinner is the low bidder, Pierce Asphalt LLC for turn fourteen thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
Questions for Darren?
I had looked through there, I may have missed it. Is this an overlay? Because I didn't see where it specifically said that this was an overlay in, in the paper.
Yes, it's an overlay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Darren? If not, is there a motion to award the bid to Pierce Asphalt?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the city of Rolla, Missouri, and Pierce Asphalt LLC.
Moving on to citizen communication, is there any citizen that would like to speak to the city council? Yes, sir. If you would, please give your name and address to the clerk, and if you can keep your comments to three minutes.
I, I come to you tonight to ask for a clarification on the city's website. My name's Steve Jackson, I'm running for Ward Three City Council in next month's election. On the city's website, the Ward Three still, is still listed as the Rolla Technical Center as the voting place, and that got changed to the Rolla Bible Church. So, the city still has the old voting location on it, and I would just ask, that would be updated before the election that's coming up.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Any other citizens that would like to speak to city council?
That old website.
If not, are there any mayor or city council comments? Comments for the good of the order? Our next council meeting is Monday, March eighteenth. We have a legal issue that we would like to go into closed session today. Is there a motion to go into closed session?